Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board meeting on May 9th, 2017. My name is Mike Aiken, I'm the chairman, to my left the vice-chairman, Mr. Carvajal. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Henle, Brian Redell, and Mr. Frankel in the back. Ahead of Inspection Service behind me, Mr. Duca, our clerk, Ms. Murphy. Do you have a cell phone or a pager? Could you put it on silent and vibrate, please, not to interrupt the meeting? And if someone's gonna testify tonight, you need to stand and raise your right hand. If you think you might testify, please stand up and raise your right hand.
This way of health print, the health print, not the other truths are healthy, God.
Thank you. So, half the room's not testifying. We'll start with some old business. First, could I make a motion of waiving reading of the minutes by 25?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion of waiving reading of the minutes of the meeting at April 25th.
Second. Our motion, seeing none? All. Two? All right? Yes? Opposed? No? Good. All business, case number 16085. We have a letter here for Sagamore Street will continue June 13th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion of the torments of prejudice, case number 2017-28, Jesse Snell for variance, construction addition for extra living space on premises number 92 Sagamore Street Quincy. Make a motion to continue the hearing until June 13th.
Second. Second. On a motion, seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? So, more. Now, the letter here for case number Z1728, 201 Hillings Road, which are without prejudice. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion of the torments of prejudice, case number 2017-28, Jesse Snell for variance, construction addition for extra living space on premises number 201 Hillings Street.
Second. Our motion, seeing none, all in favor? All. Opposed? So, more. Let's move down one. Case number Z1735, EY Realty LLC, Cervantes, a multi-existing two-family home constructing a four-unit residential complex, number 106 in the building. The captain and representative here.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm attorney Henry Levin, 875 Southern Avenue in Quincy, and I'm here representing EY Realty Development. The proposal in front of you is to convert a two-family house on Intervale Street into four townhouses. The actual lot itself is made up of two separate lots, which we've combined. There are four areas of concern, which we have to come before the Board of Appeals. One is the front setback. There's a requirement of a 25-foot setback in the front, which the building itself does, but there's an overhang starting on the second floor, which sticks out two feet for aesthetic purposes. It does not, the building itself has the 25-foot setback, but because of the overhang on the front, and I believe you all have copies to see that. That's number one. Number two is there's a restriction of pavement of 20 feet. Now, each unit has its own driveway, which makes it over the 20 feet, if you combine them all together. Each one has separate driveways for itself, and there's, in between, if you look, you can see that there's a buffer zone between several of the parking lot, parking lot air routes. Next is the reduction of the lot size of, it's required of 4,000 square feet per unit, and we only have 2,900. And also on the FAR, we are over that, because the zoning calls for .04, and this comes out to .07. We have presented the plans before the planning board, and everything was approved by them. I don't know if you have any questions. Mr. Chris Lee Yu is here, the developer, and if you have any questions, he'd be here, I'd hopefully answer them.
Is no guest parking at all in that lot? Say that. Is no guest parking at all in that lot?
Uh, no, but there's a requirement of, we have two spaces per unit, one in the garage and one in front.
I know, that's why I asked you if you had anything for...
Yeah, no, there's, but I believe that meets the zoning requirement.
But the other things, sometimes people do other things to make up law.
We could, we could do it on the side, but that would take away the landscaping. There is room on the side to add parking, if the board...
Where would you put that?
There's 20 feet on each side. So, you could have a few spaces, but aesthetically, I, you know... And I just wanna say one other thing, that, because I know from here with the site, and all of the houses around there are in the same situation as this, each house has a garage and a driveway. And, because we had a meeting with the abutists, and they had that same concern about visitors. But the problem is that everybody in that street has that same problem.
Right.
Not unique to this particular part.
Right, we're adding to the problem.
Absolutely, I'm not denying that.
Right.
Have you thought about three townhouses, uh, four?
Could we? Of course we could. But I think financially, it would be much, much more difficult. Actually, we started with five, and when we met with the planning board, it was suggested we cut it back to four. Also, they had requested, because it was a flat roof, and they asked that we made it a pitch roof, so it would, you know, blend in with the neighborhood.
Any questions, the board?
Not at this time. I have one question. On this drawing here, if you were to put another space over here, it looks like there's some type of crushed stone structure there.
Oh, no, that would be the driveway.
The driveway, see?
Yeah, it's the landscape all the way up top. We can put parking over here, one, two, three, four.
So, you could put parking at the top of this?
Yes, that'd be the driveway.
Okay, just that question.
Any other questions? Thank you. Does anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor? First off, second call. Third call closed. Correspondents?
Yes, we have a letter from DPW, a lawyer. We have reviewed the subject of the public records project of Hammond's Art House Drainage. One, submit a stormwater report explaining how the service run off will be disposed and treated. The report should include paint, stormwater checklist, and a ten stormwater checklist, and a making plan for proposed drainage structures. Two, submit calculations showing how proposed infiltration structures that have been sized to portray the required recharge volume that will drain, that will drain a certain two hours. Three, is there any soil tests on proposed locations for the drainage structures to determine soil properties and levels of water table? Four, apply for a stormwater connection permit for the Department of Public Works before construction. Five, all bend structures should be removed or filled with dense grated stone. Six, proposed infiltration system violates the setback requirement for the property line as drainage water. One, perform water flow test for the city water department. Two, increase the water system to be installed. Three, install curb stop valve boxes on the sidewalk for the service pipe. Also advise how proposed service will be connected to the mains. Four, cut and cap existing water service at connection with the mains. Five, provide calculation to show proposed 1.5-inch water service adequate for units. Revisit bed, a 2-inch pipe being said 1.5. Six, are there any measures to protect the water pipes from contamination proposed sewer pipes? Seven, only one meter will be provided for an apartment building. Sewer, one, the power's cleaned out, so the sewer pipe should have 22.5-degree elbows and 145-inch degree elbow, 145-degree elbow. Detail can be obtained by the city sewer department. Two, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back side of the back wall. Three, all bend structures should be removed or filled with dense grated stone. Four, revise and should be connected with PCB wired sewer pipe plug in rubber gasketed pipe bell. This is a challenge to them. Three, next, general, require the existing sidewalk in front of proposed development on Intervale Street to be reconstructed instead of individual patchwork to utility trenches and driveway entrances. Two, install several concrete survey monuments to deluge the public right of way. The monuments should be set by a professional land survey. We install pride to the acceptance of as-built plans. Three, provide dimensions to grade for driveway entrances. Four, confirm the house owner to be used with the engineering division of the Department of Public Works. Five, explain how the trash will be handled. Six, provide separate plans showing the existing condition of grading proposed condition of grading. The existing condition plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor. And seven, part completion of the project as-built plans showing for utilities, buildings, footprints, reference accounts, and bench box defining their total size, facilities and driveway is to be submitted while the project is filed. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. More information is required, these are files.
Call about a hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call? Second call? Third call closed? I want to take a look, but I just think it's too big. What nice, we're gonna fit in there nice with a couple of guest spaces, it's tight, it's a good, tight.
Well, there's a question for this, too, should we probably get some answers to the questions?
Well, yeah, we can give him that letter and have him, all you deny, or to just put it on him to make it smaller, or wait two weeks to come back, take a look at it. I think the parking is just, to write this up there as he is on that street. It's everyone in the city, be sure you won't give it right down on the street. My opinion, I'm one. Any thoughts out there? Best?
Well, I, you said, there's a couple of question marks to answer here. Sprinklers, you know, that'll be something nice.
We are using sprinklers.
They'd have to do all that, they would have to do all that supply.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Well, I'm okay with coming back, taking a look.
So, Brian?
Yeah, my doctor says you always have the parking.
We can provide more parking space on each side, two on each side, actually.
We prefer not to have pavement there, right? You could crush them, crush them, yeah.
You can wanna do.
Yeah.
Can you tell me again?
I think that's the exception, to take another look at it, but I would like to see two more spaces on the other side of that, if the curb comes. So, guest parking, if you're gonna go with four.
Three now?
That, I think I'd be in the gray, see, it looks like a lot of house, a lot of property. Building height? What, I see like...
It says 36, but he said he cut it down, you cut it down, or it's 36?
Yeah, right. No, what I had said was it was a flat, the original design was a flat roof, and the planning department asked that we would pitch it, make it a pitch roof, so it would blend in with the neighbors.
So, it's 36 feet?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that come down in some way, I don't know, if you can figure out how to do it, but I know the garage spaces, but, I mean, you're already gonna tower over every property there, and it is, I mean, just another foot, I think, is a slap in the face, almost, you know?
All right. Take another look at it, come back in two weeks?
Followed down.
Some motion, please?
It's 25th.
That's the 23rd?
Chairman, matter number Z17-35, EY Realty LLC, Cervantes, and abolish existing two-family houses, destructive four-unit residential complex, and premises number 104106 in Intervale Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing until May 23rd.
Second? Second. Before we vote, I just have to say there was a letter here, opposed, that's a special writing from Justin May, that he thinks it's too big for the parking. All in favor? All opposed? So, more. 23rd?
Thank you.
Thank you. What I'm gonna do is, why don't you, why don't you take over, Mr. Redell, if you could...
Block out, yeah.
Yeah, I think Mr. Frankel has done that, and the Chanel case, there should be four on that, what was that? Just for now, take the rest of the cases.
All right, matter number Z17-3, Paul Chanel trustee, P and D Realty Trust, for appeal of the inability to receive enforcement on the premises number 210-216 Washington Street Quincy.
You take the floor. By last time you guys were here, we were talking about maybe coming to some sort of agreement. Now, was there any discussion between the parties, or is that just out of the question?
No, no, we did, we did meet last, last Friday, and Mr. Chanel presented some issues that he thought might address his concerns, and Mr. Fleming and Mr. DeBona had discussions, and they came back, and they were willing to do, take some steps, but we didn't feel it was enough, so the talks weren't successful, but we certainly appreciate the opportunity to try to help.
What were those steps, that, what did you ask for, and what did they agree?
Well, we, we did feel that the deck was too large, we asked that the fence be moved back some distance away from the property line. We talked about operation of hours, Mr. Fleming had said that they might be willing to talk about somewhat restricting of the hours. We asked that it, that the outside patio be closed at dark during the summertime, so that June and July would probably be open till about nine o'clock, and August would probably be about eight-thirty by the time it gets dark. He talked about closing at 10 o'clock on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday nights, and maybe Wednesday nights, but wanted to be open till the full, as late as he could on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and those were not agreeable to us. And I'm sure Mr. Fleming will, if his recollection is different, but, you know, we really didn't, didn't make much headway, but, you know, again, we appreciated the opportunity to talk.
May I speak on that, just, the lighting was off, was wrong?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the lighting, Mr. Fleming talked about, you know, there was a type of lighting that could be directed down away from the, and not shine into the windows. I pointed out to him that that was represented before the license board, that's where it was gonna be from the very start, and it wasn't, and I think I described driving by there in the wintertime, and the lights are on all went along, and they were swinging in the wind, and, you know, that was certainly very objectionable to the occupants of the residential property next door, so, you know, that was another point. So, we didn't really make a lot of headway, but again, we, you know, certainly wasn't for trying on Bumpai's side, I assume, we still didn't able to get it resolved. And so, with that, we do come back to the board, before the board tonight, and I got prepared, and I'd like to hand out to the board, what I had is proposed findings, and I'll give copies to Mr. Fleming as well, but I just asked the board to adopt the findings, and Mr. Fleming has developed, give copies out.
Thank you very much.
I won't take a lot of time to go through them, but I, I do think that it's clear that when the property was conveyed, prior to conveyance, it was a 14,000-foot parcel, which was sufficient size to have a mixed-use building with commercial and residential in it, in a business being, meant the minimum lot size, but as it was conveyed out to Mr. DeBona in 2011, it's a little over 6,000 square feet with a minimum lot size for residential uses in a business being 14,000 square foot lot, so it's a, it's an undersized, not a nonconforming, it is a nonconforming lot, and it does not have any nonconforming rights. The lot was conveyed out after the present zoning ordinance was adopted, so it's, it's an illegal lot, it's a substandard lot, 6,300 square feet plus less than 6,400 square feet, minimum lot size for residential structures in a business being 14,000 foot. So, it doesn't meet the minimum requirements, a substandard lot. You know, we, I won't go through all the issues that I raised last time, but the parking, parking is not there, not under the control. Arguably, before it was sold by Republic Fleming, they did own a parking lot, and it was within 300 feet, that was the requirement under the old zoning ordinance. Under the new zoning ordinance, it has to be owned or controlled by the property owner, doesn't own parking, doesn't control any parking, any off-street parking. With an increase of 50 seats on the patio, that's another 12 parking spaces, and he's short, so, you know, it just doesn't meet the parking requirements. It's in the, it's in the side yard setback, you know, there's just a number of violations that I've gone through and cited in my, in my proposed findings, and I would ask that the board find that there, that there are violations of the zoning code, and that the zoning code ought to be enforced. And I know Mr. Chanel would like to make a short statement, so I'll ask that he let me do that. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to listen.
Okay.
I have some more handouts here, it might save a lot of words. And I've labeled them so that I keep, that hopefully be on the same page. For the record, my name is Paul Chanel, and I have owned 202, 206 Washington Street since 1993. Last time we met, a lot of the board members stated that they were confused by the process involved in the cagis, courtyard patio transformation, and I hope to take a few minutes just to walk through this and explain why brought us to run this board in the first place. On September 6th, a couple days after I found out the patio was being proposed, I penned a letter stating my objections to the site here, one reason being that it wasn't visible from cagis, wasn't contiguous with the original cagis. On September 13th, there was a licensing board meeting in which the board wanted permission for the patio and the liquor license to be cast, even though it wasn't contiguous. The original drawing, that's labeled as number one, it was submitted with the application, I assume it was submitted to the state for the liquor license application also, and it's flawed. In my opinion, it was designed to give the illusion that cagis and patio were connected. It showed an asphalt dumpster area, and what was missing was more important. It didn't show the former grocery store turned coffee shop on this drawing. It doesn't show that there was a stairway that separated the restaurant from the cagis. It doesn't show that there was a second means of egress that emptied onto this patio from the second-floor apartment. There's a couple of pitches I submitted, I submitted them number two and three, and in these pitches, it shows the second means of egress, and it shows the depth that was for that second means of egress, and it shows pillars, and number three shows, number two is actually the before, and number three is the after. So, there was structural work done on this site.
Did we show you this before?
I don't think we spoke about it in this text.
Last week?
Yeah, yes, we had last week, but I don't think we showed it in this text, and there was structural work done here, and it was done without permit, and there were no record of any inspections done on that particular. And if you look closer, you'll see that it was changed from a wood structure to a cement The, on September 26th, after I spoke with Mr. McRitchie, when I saw what was, what was being built there and so forth, we personally delivered the licensing board members and other city officials a request for another hearing. That was denied. But we did mention to Mr. DeBona that he proceeds at his own risk, and we set the letter up accordingly. On November 10th, another letter was drafted by my counsel submitting to licensing board listing some, but not all of the violations. Again, it was suggested that Mr. DeBona proceed at his own risk. Another attempt at a meeting was denied. On September 5th, a letter was sent to Mr. Duca asking for action to be taken regarding zoning violations, and we spoke of this last time, the illegal up-premise sign, the lights that were from my tenants. Now, this was on December 5th, and other violations that Mr. Ritchie already referred to. This sign was up, the lights were on, all went along. That sign did not come down until April. So, again, we just, I'm just trying to point out there were violations here that were addressed, that's why we're here. On January 16th, another letter was sent out inquiring about the violations and lack of zoning enforcement. On January 20th, a letter was sent back or emailed to attorney McRitchie from Mr. Duca, stating there were no violations. On February 10th, another letter was sent requesting a hearing in front of the board. March 21st, a hearing was scheduled by the licensing board to change the patio ownership to a paper company set up by Mr. DeBona, known as RAC 208, that's the title of the company. He had evicted his tenants and decided to add 20 more seats to this already burdened So, there was another drawing that was sent, I assumed, to the licensing board, and that's number four, and so I have submitted, I assumed this was submitted to the liquor board. It doesn't, again, show the second means of egress that dumps from the apartment onto this deck which serves alcohol. So, I spoke with a person from the state who molds the curriculum and teaches the state code. I asked him to interpret the law and give me clarification on it, plans. I was told the patio license to serve alcohol, this license to serve alcohol, must conform to the laws governed by the law as follows. If there is more than 20 seats, it must have two full handicap bathrooms. It doesn't have that, and the plans don't show that. If it has more than 60 seats, it must have three toilets in the ladies' room and two toilets in the men's room. And I included item number five, which is actually the state code, and I highlighted the section that refers to his restaurant, and it shows that any more than 30 seats has to have one toilet in ladies' room each, and in fact, there was another patio in the social that was closed down, I was told by the same individual for the same violations. And Dr. Rehas, but you heard last month from neighbors and abutists as to their noise concerns, as to the light show that existed all went along. Mr. Kaker, Mr. Blinsky, and Ms. Salinas had the light show in their apartments in the hallways for that period of time. They were also shooing away the people who were trying to park illegally on parking lot about it, as they explained last week. And there's another picture there, and if you can open that picture number six, this picture, it says, it shows that the workman had a trespass on my property, which is an offense of the electrical work. There was no setback on that fence. The bad side of the fence was facing us. It's, in my eyes, and maybe it's just in my eyes, but it seems to be an encroachment in itself right there. That's one of the things we asked for, is him to move the fence back a few feet, so that it didn't encroach. And you heard from my tenant that she was in fear of her safety as a result of that being so close. I think she'd say it was two feet, three inches, I think it's a little more. At this stage, it seems like the right thing, this is... This is not a venue for a patio with 75 people, 50 people in a patio, 25 people in this, in the restaurant itself. I offered some suggestions, the lights and so forth in this, and moving the fence back a little bit and maintaining hours reasonable for the people who live in this drawing. This is, this is surrounded by residents on all four sides and it's a noise reverberation. We got a call out October 29th, I got a call from one of my tenants and a heat bill from another saying that the noise was unbearable. He was told background music only. The radio was blaring, it was quite exciting. So I would ask that the, I'd like to see the board, I would ask the board to uphold the state laws that are on record that fought reasons like this, the state of Massachusetts. So with that, I just say thank you for your time.
Not sure where to start. I think what's most disconcerting and upsetting about this whole process is that Mr. DeBona did everything right. He began this process by first reaching out to the city councilor, by talking with his neighbors and by reaching out to Mr. Schinett. I will talk about the meeting that we had and the offers that we made to compromise this matter, but I think it's important to understand that the meeting that we had the other day wasn't the first meeting that Mr. DeBona had with Mr. Schinett. In fact, in August, he stood on the property, explained the proposal in detail to Mr. Schinett, how he was building a patio to utilize for the restaurant outside. He provided him with details about that patio proposal. And Mr. Schinett made the comment to him at that time saying, well, maybe it's time for me to retire and sell my property. It expressed no opposition and no concerns at the time. So Mr. Schinett, as he always did, he continued to meet with all the city officials, met with Mr. Duker, met with Drew Shealy, the health commissioner, sought their input and advice as to things that he should do as he implemented these changes, obtained their advice. In fact, Mr. Drew Shealy, the health commissioner, talked to him about the idea of removing the dumpster from that location. That was a cause of concern and problems in the past. And he agreed to modify his plans to be responsive to the health commissioner's concerns. He spoke with Mr. Duker as he went through the process. He spoke with all the department heads and the city councilor. The city councilor then had a neighborhood meeting and she reached out to the neighbors. Mr. Schinett indicated to me the other day at our meeting that he never received notice. For some reason, he never, he's the only person that didn't receive notice, yet everyone else received notice. He came to the neighborhood meeting and expressed their questions and comments about the proposal, all of which Mr. DeBona incorporated into his plans and generally received support as he did from the departments that he met with throughout the process. So it's disconcerting that, to Mr. DeBona, that he stands here tonight and he came here last meeting and he hears Mr. Schinett indicating that he never knew anything about it and that the first that he learned about it was when the patio was all completed and on September 16th, he expressed his concerns and his objection. That's not, that's not accurate according to Mr. DeBona. There was several conversations during that time. Furthermore, I think what's disconcerting is that what Mr. Schinett's seeking here through his attorney, Jay McRitchie, is not simply to address the patio that's before, that was before the licensing board, but to eliminate Mr. DeBona's ability to utilize his property and to eliminate his business at cagneys that he's operated since 1990. And I expressed some concerns to both Mr. McRitchie and Mr. Schinett that it was a little disconcerting that they essentially are seeking to do so, to do that, to take away this man's livelihood, the business that he's put incredible amount of time and effort into over the years and causing him now to be here before this party after he's already appeared before the city's licensing board to argue this case all over again. He did everything right and he did things in accordance with what he understood to be the law and the rules and regulations of the city. And he sought the advice of all the parties in the city in doing so. So this body is being asked to basically overturn the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Duker, who by the way, participated in this process throughout the time that it was being designed, being built and had opportunities to review the plans, had opportunities to review the title and the information that is being testified to tonight. And he made a decision that at that time, that's well within his authority to do so, that he did not believe that Mr. DeBona needed zoning relief and hence issued him the appropriate permits to do the work that he did on the site. And at the same time, Mr. Duker's department, building department, reviewed all the building codes that they're very familiar with to determine whether or not this property met building code regulations and at all times made decisions that Mr. DeBona was complying with the code, the building code relative to handicap accessibility, which was improved to bathrooms that were utilized and available on the site and to the overall construction of the patio. To answer, address some of the comments that were raised, and by the way, although there's been testimony from Mr. McRitchie and Mr. Schinett about the title to this property that dates back years and years when this, when this property was owned by Republic and about parking that may have been associated with it, not one shred of that actual evidence has been provided to this board. I did not see any documentation from the registry of deeds indicating all the ownership rights to this property. I did not see any information that was provided to this body that indicated that somehow parking was eliminated when the site was conveyed. None of that. That's just simply rumor and innuendo and testimony of parties that are not privy to that information. But no documentation has been provided to this board to allow this board to rest your decision on that evidence. So I would contend that that should just be ignored because it's simply just not evidence that you could consider. With regard to this property, as I indicated, Mr. DeBona invested $250,000 to make the improvements that he made to the site. He responded and answered the concerns of the health department and the building department. He has, and he's, and he applied for and obtained all the permits. He added two new bathrooms to the facility. He moved the bar inside during discussions about noise to ensure that there's less noise being generated by the patio. He made the property more handicap accessible. He made, and he did all, made all these changes as he went through the process. Furthermore, we did have a meeting as was indicated by Mr. McRitchie. And during that meeting, Mr. DeBona didn't ask, I mean, Mr. Schinett didn't ask Mr. DeBona to move the fence a little bit off the property line or a foot or two off the property line. He asked him to move it 10 to 14 feet off the property. To do so would essentially eliminate the ability to utilize the patio. And when Mr. DeBona actually installed that fence, he did so with the assistance of a surveyor. And a surveyor actually marked and state the property lines, marked the property lines. And Mr. DeBona actually installed the fence away from the property line, 12 to 18 inches off the property line to ensure that he was going to allow and pull, and provide a little bit more room for Mr. Schinett's property to, and his tenants. Interestingly enough, Mr. Schinett's stairs on that right side of the home are actually on the property line. They're on the property line. They encroach on the property line, not the fence that's been installed by Mr. DeBona. So I would suggest that he's already made an accommodation to that request. And we indicated such when we met with Mr. Schinett that this was already looked at and analyzed by Mr. DeBona when he installed the fence and he pulled it in off the property line. He also, he also requested that the patio not be used at nighttime hours, basically in the dark, indicating that, you know, at different times of the year, that would allow Mr. DeBona to stay open a little later. But he indicated as such that he was, he really wanted the patio to be closed by 8:30. It doesn't work. What Mr. DeBona did however offer is that he offered that from Sunday through Wednesday that he would close the patio at 10 o'clock. Last, it would be closed at that, at that hour. He's allowed to operate till 11 o'clock by the licensing of the license, by the license of the licensing board, but he offered to do so and close the patio by 10 o'clock on those nights. He also offered to raise the fence and actually applied for a variance for this board that you'll, that you will hear if that matter moves forward, to raise the fence by an additional three feet. Last time we were here, a neighbor or one of the residents of the building expressed concern about folks being able to look into her window. And they also raised concerns about lighting. And so Mr. DeBona looked and agreed to add a decorative element to the fence that would raise the fence by another three feet. That offer of compromise was offered to Mr. Schinett and he declined, indicating that he already thought the fence was too high and he didn't like the style or the, or the look of the fence in that location. Mr. DeBona also agreed to look at the lighting to ensure that the lighting would shine down onto the patio and that it would not intrude or interfere with the neighbors, the residents' privacy. All of these offers, all of this discussion really went nowhere. It was very clear to us that there was no intent by that meeting to come to a resolution and a compromise unless he was able to get every single thing that he wanted. When we came back with that offer, there was no additional discussion. Meeting, the meeting ended at that time and we went no further. But it's really disappointing that the way this, this whole matter is moving forward. And I feel badly for Mr. DeBona because had he been told at any point in time by the city of Quincy during this process, he would not, that he needed zoning relief, that he needed other types of permits in order to move this forward, he would have, he would have done so prior to any construction. And he may have chosen not to move forward at all. But he relied on, on the expertise of the folks that he, that he worked with at the city and the relationships that he established with the folks at the city in moving this matter forward. And he felt quite frankly that he was doing the right thing. So there's a lot of other things that we can talk about, but I won't believe the board. I know the board has other matters on, on before you tonight, but we are certainly answering questions and responding to any concerns that you may have.
I have a secret. Would you want to say something?
Ah, yeah, my name, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of points to the board. The building code comments are incorrect, respectfully. Just wanted to point that out to you here. We're not here, but building code matters anyway. Secondly, as you deliberate in whatever you decide, as far as the operation and the hours of operation, I would ask you to consider that the licensing board under the noise ordinance is very flexible. We can turn it up or down at any, anytime. If this board decides to put a condition on hours that's not easily changed, then we go through another process. So I would just ask you to consider that during your deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions of anyone, board members?
A lot's been made of the wintertime perpetual lighting and noise. I understand that is now gone, that this problem was, was that, I'm assuming it wasn't an overt attempt to cause trouble, that was an event that, I understand it was an event that occurred and just the lighting never got taken down?
Yeah, I believe so. I think that was associated with the sign too.
So that's gone, signs are gone, lights are gone.
Yeah, there was only a temporary sign, yes. There's, there's lighting that's, that's on the property right now.
But not, not the dangly, looks like construction lighting that's hanging across the top.
Yeah, there's some kind of, there's some kind of lighting like that.
Same one?
Similar to that.
Is that what's been described as the downlighting?
No, I said what, the offer that was made was to, to want install fencing that would provide some, to, to ensure that the lighting would not impact the residential tenant and to look at the lighting to determine whether changes needed to be made to the lighting so that it would, to ensure that it would shine down even. And there's also the other offer too that was made is to, is to eliminate outside music and move all the music inside. There was an earlier agreement to move the bar inside. There was some talk about having the bar on the corner of the patio that was moved inside during an earlier discussion with the parties to ensure that, that noise be limited. He's made a number of changes as he's planned this process.
So you're representing that there's no bar outside and that you offered to not have any sound, electronic sound or artificial sound? No bar outside?
And there's no bar outside. The bar has been moved inside and prior to that meeting.
Mr. Fleming, with the top, the fence that was, that decorative top fence, would that go to the top of this post?
It would. It would go, it would go on the, on the fence as it sits there now, so it would go to the top of the post about another three feet. And we really felt, and I know that Mr. DeBona felt, it's an expense, it's a substantial expense to him, but he really felt as though that was going to provide some level of privacy to the tenant. And you know, it's interesting to note again, the stairs, Mr. Schinett's stairs are on the property line. Had he actually installed the fence where he could have along the property line, it would have essentially prevented them from walking past their stairs. But he understood that and was trying to be a neighbor and pulled the fence in on that property line by about 18, 18 inches.
What's the current height of this fence?
About six foot.
So would the decorative property be about eight feet?
About, yeah, about nine, nine feet. I believe that requires a variance if I'm correct.
Would that be a solid fence or lattice type work or?
I believe it's going to be horizontally around the ceiling, so it's decorative, but also would block any sideline and block any light. So it would be very nice handicap sink going across the top, blocking up light, its invisibility. That's been on good. I put the application in.
Great, Chris.
No, just quickly though.
Just very quickly, the, the driveway has been filled to make a patio, so the level has been raised about four feet already. Now that the six foot fence is posted above it, if the fence is extended another three feet higher, it'll be four feet plus six feet plus three feet. That's 13 feet above what was the original ground level. So.
And that's not good?
That's not good. 13 foot fence is not good. And that's the way Mr. DeBona sees it. 13 feet because the, the ground level has been brought up about four feet in leveling off what had been a driveway sloped down, it's now been backfilled and brought up, so that.
Thank you. I have a quick question. So you're not really looking for a modified use of this property then? You're looking for no use?
I'm looking, I'm saying that it's, there are violations of the zoning ordinance.
So you're saying that, so you're saying that it shouldn't be used? Is that what you're saying?
Well, he could, he could file for zoning relief, but it doesn't meet the current zoning.
So you are saying it shouldn't be used?
There are many violations of the zoning.
So you're not saying it should be modified, you're saying it should not be used, current use? Innocent entirety?
Right now, if, no, not innocent entirety. There could be a restaurant there. It's a sufficient size for a restaurant. It's not a sufficient size lot to have residential uses or mixed use property in a business B zone. The minimum lot size for residential uses in business B is 14,000 square feet. This is about 6,300, 6,400 square feet. Before it was conveyed, and Mr. Fleming says there are no records from the registry of deeds, you have the land court plan in front of you and it says that it was a combination or a subdivision of a prior lot one. If you add the lot one and the new lots that were created, it exceeds 14,000 square feet.
What's the date of that plot?
2011.
What's the date that you brought back when you?
The conveyance, the conveyance to Mr. DeBona was in 2011. So they're pushing up against the six year statute of limitations that the city has to enforce the zoning here. That's part of the reason we're here. There's a six foot, six year statute of limitations for the city to enforce the zoning and the city is not doing anything about it and Mr. Schinett has been paying the price. There's a, you know, a mixed use building that requires a There's a, you know, a mixed use building that requires a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. It's an, it's an undersized lot. Was, it was commonly owned parking when it was owned by Republic. The parking lot itself is not sufficient, and that parking lot has been referenced in another zoning board of appeals decision having to do with Republic and a flood link permit to build a warehouse. That parking lot is referenced, but there are a number of violations, and zoning should be enforced. And if it means that he's entitled to apply for relief from the zoning with variances and special permits that are required and so forth, we may be here again on those issues. But at the very least, the city has an obligation to enforce the zoning. Thank you.
We'll call this part of the hearing closed, and I think we have a decision to make. I can't, I don't think we have any authority to put these people out of business. I don't know about the legalities of the may and say. That's something the court decides. I don't think that's something that the appeals decides. I think that we can take some of these issues that were suggested to make the property a little bit better. But I'm just one guy here, but I think what we do is denying an appeal without looking at all. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's what I think. I think you gave it some conditions.
I would agree with you. I think that we could add some conditions. It's not, it's kind of a situation where neither side is going to be happy unless the other side is totally blocked out from what they want. So if they're going to leave it up to us to make a decision, we're going to have to reach a compromise, make it unlivable for both, all livable for both. Neither side's going to be happy in that situation, but that's not settling as far as it gets. That's exactly what it gets.
I agree as well. I believe we should modify the use through agreement. I don't think we have any right to put somebody out of business. I don't, it's been there since 1990, and I just don't, I don't think that's what we do here.
There was another restaurant before.
All right. So there's many prayers for relief in here that I don't think are appropriately before the board now, previously.
You mean we opposed the?
Not even the findings, going back to the initial papers filed and stuff discussed today. Mr. Ritchie talked about the state licensing board. I thought, yeah, that's up to them. We're not here for that. As far as I'm concerned, as I said before, we'll make a decision, we're going to make a decision. I'm not looking to, I don't think by denying the appeal or allowing the appeal, we want to put conditions on anything. I just think we're going to go one way or the other. That's my, I'm just one guy. I think the patio is legal. It's landscaping, it's decorative. I don't think it violates any zoning. It's not encroaching. It's, you can, as long as you're not creating a structure, as I understand, going up, it's perfectly fine. A six foot fence is perfectly fine. I get it. It's close. The houses are close. It's a, it's residential, it's on top of business. It's unfortunate. We've got two gentlemen here who are productive members of the Quincy community, who are, by all discussions, among them are both nice guys who have done great stuff while they've been here, and this is unfortunate, but I don't see, I have to rely on Mr. Duca to tell me whether there's zoning violations. My take was there wasn't or it wouldn't go on to this stage, and I don't, I don't agree with the allegations or the items that are requested for us to issue a ruling to compel the building department to, I don't, I don't agree with what they're laying out here. And there's other venues, I guess, if you don't like it. My inclination would be I'm going to, I mean, I don't like the nine foot poles on the fences. I think it looks prison-esque, but I'm not hanging my hat on poles. I just, that's not my thing. And I would expect a good neighbor, there's now no music by offer, there's no bar, there's people sitting out there eating and chatting. Now, I think that's a gigantic step at compromise and making it work. I don't like, I don't think light should be swinging around. It can blow in the breeze and can bother people around there. I think that's something that needs to be dealt with, just me personally. This is what I'm saying. You know, obviously the sign was an issue, that's gone. Making this into some type of Parisian corner, not their yard cafe between residential, it is what it is. It's been approved by several agencies, and now it's coming here because no, they didn't like what happened there. And I don't particularly like that because I just don't think it's appropriate. So I will be, I will be seeking, I will be denying the request for any order enforcing Mr. Duca to go for the.
All right. Very good. Let's do make a motion. I do think we should put in some of those things we talked about though, that is offering. Pretend the lighting should be, maybe the sign, signs could be there, it's something that we do, you know, do. Planning some things. What do you gentlemen think? You just, or you would just say?
Yeah, I don't think, if I'm denying this request for appeal or this request for an order enforcing, I don't think it's putting conditions on it. You just ask for something, I don't think we can do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Actually, Jeff brings up a good point. Usually a denial of an appeal doesn't come with conditions. If the board wants, I could, I have not made a finding on this at this point. I could make a finding based on some of the information that I've heard tonight, and that would be into the floor. However, you guys won't decide to do this. But that is one option.
I can make that option.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can make a motion to deny me.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Matter Z 17-33, Paul Chenette, trustee of P and D Realty Trust, for an appeal of the inability to receive enforcement for the premises number 210-216 Washington Street, Quincy. I make a motion that the board deny the move-ins request.
Second. Anyone?
Definitely subject to Mr. Duca making a finding or just denying.
Mr. Duca wants to make a finding regarding certain matters, that certainly should be the end of the ballot.
I'm motion seeing none, all in favor. All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's take five minutes.
Do we have anyone else?
I'll take five from half time. We'll take a moment.